Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting into order. Will you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the Constitution, one eighteen hundred and fifty. Please start with a roll call.
Council President Albertson.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Halloran. Councilmember McGurven.
Here.
Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
And Councilmember Vaughn.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
All right, thank you. We're gonna start off tonight with a proclamation. It's Filipino-American Heritage Month.
Alright, proclamation, whereas October is the time to commemorate the contributions and history of Filipino-Americans in the United States. Whereas Filipino-American have contributed significantly to building communities, strengthening the US economy, enriching the nation's cultural fabric, and advancing movements for labor rights, racial justice, and immigrant equity. And whereas Filipino-American History Month is distinct from Heritage Month as it emphasizes the critical history experiences and legacies of Filipinos in America. And whereas the 2025 theme for Filipino-American History Month is "From quotas to communities: Filipino-American Migration and Movement", which commemorates the 60th anniversary of the 1965 Immigration and Naturalization Act. And whereas as the 17th most diverse city in the country, Renton seeks to acknowledge and celebrate the diversity of its community and increase understanding, recognition, and appreciation of the rich history and experiences of Filipino-Americans. And whereas the Filipino-American community is the nation's second-largest Asian-American group in the United States and home to over 5,000 Filipino-Americans in the greater Renton area. And whereas Filipino-Americans continue to shape Renton through their active roles within the community, positions on community boards and leadership positions, and volunteerism. And now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim October 2025 to be Filipino-American History Month in the City of Renton. And I encourage all residents to join me in the special observance and witness thereof. I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 20th day of October 2025. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President.
Move to adopt the proclamation as read.
It has been moved by Council President Albertson, second by Councilmember Perez, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Okay, the motion carries, and accepting tonight is Josephine Bayan. Josephine is a member of our Planning Commission, Secretary of the Association of Filipino-American Engineers of Washington, and she's extremely involved with the Filipino community of Seattle.
Good evening. On behalf of the Filipino-American community, I would like to thank the Honorable Mayor, Armando Pavon, and distinguished members of the City Council for the proclamation of the Filipino-American History Month this October. Tonight, it's with great pride and honor to accept the proclamation. And standing with me is my family, led by my husband Roy and children, Alvin and Annalyn and my grandsons. Also, my AFU, or the Association of Filipino-American Engineers of Washington, is with me tonight, led by our President Christine Maristella. And I don't know if RAP Project Management Services is here tonight. Celebrated throughout the month of October, the Filipino-American History Month commemorates the earliest evidence or presence of Filipinos in the United States of America. Over the years, contributions and legacies of Filipino-Americans in their communities are celebrated. It's not easy at first coming to America as immigrants, but with our constant pursuit of excellence, our resilience, and perseverance made us exemplary members of the workforce, not just additional members to be contributing to our community. Today, as we hold the City of Renton celebration, please allow me to share the contributions of one of my family, Ms. Gina Ortiz-Jones, since an niece of mine who was in attendance during the first Filipino-American celebration at the White House in 2015. She was with several Filipino community leaders. She was then the Director of the Office of the United States Trade Representative, Office of the US President. She also served as the Under-Secretary of the Department of Air Force under President Biden. And now she is the Mayor of San Antonio, Texas. AFU, or Association of Filipino-American Engineers, on the other hand, was established 32 years ago by a group of multidisciplined engineers. One of the founders is here, Ms. Esther Solis. And our board, she is also a Board Director, as well as Ms. Ellen Calimlim, she is also a Board Director. Our President Christine Malyari-Maristella, and our Treasurer Jennifer Cruz. And I would also like to acknowledge the AFU Dancing Engineers with Christine, Ellen, and myself, with our dance coach, Ms. Esther Solis. We danced at Tinta Quela Filipino-American History Month last Thursday, so I hope you will not ask us to dance tonight. AFU is a nonprofit organization dedicated to foster fellowship among our members and inspire deep appreciation for our Filipino-American culture heritage through fellowship, collaboration, educational and professional programs, and community services. In addition of being the Planning Commissioner and Secretary of AFU, I am also the past President of the Association for the Advancement of Cost Engineering International, Seattle Section. Our educational program provides opportunities for professional development, training, mentoring, and scholarships. AFU awards annually through our annual gala we had at last October 11. We award local engineering scholarship through the Manalang Foundation. He is also a member of AFU, and Inhinierang Scholar Award, or Female Engineers Award. We also provide scholarships in the Philippines as a means of giving back to where we came from by providing tuition fee and board examination review assistance. To date, we have local, 26 local scholars. Some of them are engineering students at U-Dub and other universities in Washington. And we have 18 Philippine scholars. Four of them have graduated. Through these programs, AFU provides positive impacts and inspires the younger generation to achieve their dreams and perhaps be able to give back to their communities in the future. Again, thank you very much for recognizing our contributions to the community, and I wish you more power and success in all your endeavors. Thank you and good night.
All right. Thank you. Josephine, we're gonna take a picture, so... First, on behalf of the council, I want to thank you for your service to the Planning Commission, and thank you for bringing your family here. We're gonna take a photo now.
You're not invited in the picture.
Yes, sure. Thank you. All right. And now to dance to the public hearing, Tristan Travellus will present for the mid-biennium budget adjustment.
Good evening. My name is Tristan Travellus, Finance Director. The city is required to hold public hearings prior to the adoption of the mid-biennium budget and the setting of the property tax rate for the upcoming year. The first public hearing was held October 13. Tonight represents the second and final public hearing. All of our public hearings have been properly noticed and provide the opportunity for stakeholders to provide their input. The details of the proposed mid-biennium update, including the 2026 property tax assessment, have been discussed with council, and updated figures will be presented at the Finance Committee on October 27 before final adoption. And with that, I will turn it back over to you for the public hearing.
All right, thank you. Do we have any correspondence?
I receive no correspondence, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I do have a couple people signed up to speak. I want to remind everybody that all remarks must be addressed to the council as a whole. When I call your name, please step up to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record. You'll have three minutes. When the light turns yellow, please start winding up your comments. And first up is Daryl Plot. Daryl.
My name's Daryl Pilot. I'm from Kent, Washington. And some of you may recognize me from my other job. I've conducted the Memorial Day Program at the Renton Veterans Memorial for over 20 years. But my other job was working for Renton Police Department. God's telling me to be quiet, I think. Delta Airlines closed our office at Sea-Tac Airport in 93, and I was fortunate enough. I was a supervisor out there for Delta, and I was fortunate enough to get on with Renton Police Department, starting in the jail. About a year and a half later, Don Person, our Deputy Chief at the time, came to me and said, "Daryl, we have a 31-bed jail, and we have 50-some people spread out, laying on the floor, stacked up here. We're considering starting a home detention program. Do you think you can run the home detention program?" I said, "Don, that's what I do. I supervise people." I had no idea about being in law enforcement. I thought I was a good jailer. But doing home detention was a challenge that I welcomed. We've had an effective program for over 30 years now. Two or three years after I started the program, we were doing so well that the council approved another officer to help me. It was Officer Georgia Bunko, and she's been with the city now about 33 years. I've been retired 10 and a half years, believe it or not. And I still keep coming back. I do the Memorial Day Program, as well as other programs in the city. Back in my day, we were a family in the City of Renton. My wife was Administrative Secretary for Community Services. And we were a family. It was just a whole different atmosphere in those days. When I retired, Kenny McMullin, who was a jail sergeant here when we had a jail in Renton, and he was also a sergeant out at the SCOR facility, he was hired to take my place. So he has over 25 years seniority. And you can't put a price tag on that type of experience to do away with a home detention program. And believe me, over the years, we've worked so closely with the court. Of course, me being fat and stuff, I could go in the court if somebody was getting out of hand and they were scared they were gonna get in trouble because I had a badge on. If you lose that resource, we work with the probation department, which I know has a different name, but since I'm old and retired for a long time, I'll never know what that is. But there's so much experience, so much we do for people. We get their lives together. A father came back to me and said, "Officer Pilot, you impressed me so much with what you've said to me when I was on home detention. You changed my whole life. Would you talk to my teenage daughter and try to make sure she could get on track?" You know, in my 50-some years of work-
Daryl, I need you to wrap up your comments for us.
I can do another couple days. Oh, seriously. I'll just end with, "The problem is not electronic home detention department. The problem now is communication within the City of Renton. A few years ago, the Finance Department took over billing. That's what we used for leverage. If you can't pay for home detention, we're gonna put you in jail." Finance is not communicating with the police department or other departments, and I hope that's not citywide. But you can't get away from terminating a 30-year employee or a 25-year employee. They're just too valuable to the city. Let's get back to having that family atmosphere and do that effective job that we've done for so many years. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is Georgia Bunko. Georgia?
Good evening. I'm Georgia Bunko. I live in Puyallup. Tonight, I'd like to inform the council of some history of the Renton EHD Program that you may or may not know. Renton EHD was developed as a full-time position in March of 1995 by then Deputy Chief Don Person, who, after his retirement, became Councilman Don Person. Daryl Pilot, who spoke before me, also worked in the Renton Jail, was selected as the first EHD Coordinator. Daryl worked the program up to having an average daily population of 25. During this time, I also worked in the Renton Jail and was hired as the second full-time EHD Coordinator in 1999 to help manage the population. At its inception, Renton EHD was strictly monitoring individuals who were serving a sentence. Serving a sentence on EHD allowed a subject to maintain their employment if they were working, go to their own doctors if their medical concerns were too great for the jail to handle, or take care of family, as well as be accountable to the court. In October 2000, a suspect was arrested by the Renton Police Department for two DUIs in one night. When the suspect appeared in court, the then-sitting Renton Municipal Court Judge Terry Gorrado felt that something needed to be done to ensure defendants that are not held in jail on pretrial status for DUIs are monitored for alcohol consumption. Renton was one of the first municipalities to enact this practice. In 2013, the state legislature enacted Senate Bill 5912, which added mandatory pretrial alcohol monitoring to RCW 1021. Renton had already been doing this for 13 years. The City of Renton was ahead of the curve in this regard. In 2015, the legislature introduced House Bill 1943, which ultimately established RCW 994A 736, which established terms and conditions for home detention agencies. This was in response to it being discovered that private home detention companies had no oversight. The RCW was written, but it's unclear what state agency does the oversight. I personally have recently witnessed experience with two separate private companies that have questionable practices. One has equipment that can be purchased off of Alibaba, and it's unclear how effective it is. The second company has released a Renton municipal defendant 27 days early from their commitment, but they still sent a sentence-serve completion to the Renton Municipal Court. If the council votes on the budget as it is written to close the Renton EHD program, the City of Renton will be liable for the defendants that are monitored by these companies. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, next up is Kenny McMullin.
How you doing? I'm Kenny McMullin. I live in Auburn, Washington. Over the last 30 years, I've held a few positions for the City Renton Police Department. Started as a jailer, promoted to jail sergeant, EHD sergeant, went over to SCOR jail as a sergeant, came back to home detention. All but a few of those years, I've been with my partner, Bunko. We are not just regular employees of the City of Renton. And outside the police department, I don't think employees of Renton go through what Bunko and I had to do to get to work here. We had to pass every phase of the hiring process. We took physical fitness tests, and I passed everyone since then, too, but that's just me. On the oral boards, we had oral boards, we had in-depth background investigations, integrity interviews, and in-depth background investigations, psych tests, medical exams, and chiefs interviews. After we were hired, we had to pass the Washington Corrections Academy and do a year-long probation. What I'm getting at is private home monitoring providers don't have to go through the integrity process we did. Private home monitoring providers don't have to have the corrections background that Bunko and I have. And I bet they don't have the years of experience. Combined, we have over 60 years of experience in corrections. My bet is private home monitoring providers don't know defendants like we do. I'd like to read part of a message left on her phone from a defendant over this weekend. She says, "I'm just calling to tell you I've been at the job site. I want to check in. My TC," her site leader, "said you can call him if you need. We'll be here tomorrow, too. Oh my gosh, I'm making so much money. I'm so excited. Now 30 bucks an hour. Holy cow. Anyways, I love being clean. This is cool. All right, bye-bye." That's what Renton Home Detention does for people. In addition to monitoring, we do other things, like we do fingerprints for city employees. I think I've done the mayor's fingerprints here. Last week, I printed over a dozen contractors just so they can work in City Hall. I also do DNA. I also do criminal fingerprints. I do, we do a lot here for the City of Renton. The criminal fingerprints can't be done by anybody but a corrections officer or a certified sworn police officer. Just want you to know what we do in home detention. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is Mark Coleman.
Counsel, Mark Coleman, President of the Renton Police Guild. This is a sample of cards that are sent to EHD from EHD clients. Thanks for treating me like a human being. I want to thank you for how wonderful you've been. EHD was not fun. I can't imagine what it would have been like without being with you, being so caring and understanding. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for your encouragement and support. You are kind to me. I appreciate it. Thank you again for your help. This card is to thank you for the compassion you showed me while I was on the EHD program. Never once did you belittle me or make me feel less than a first-rate, everyday citizen. Thank you for working with me while I was looking for employment and for other appointments I bothered you with. You are both always patient and kind, and for that, I wanted to take the time to thank you. Thank you. You helped me change my ways for a better life. Thank you again for everything. You have both helped in my recovery. Thank you so much for always believing in me and for all your words of encouragement. I truly appreciate everything you have done for me. What started out as a policeman and a policewoman and a convict has turned into a wonderful friendship. Thank you. My children and partner, thank you from the bottom of their hearts. I know you thought you were taking a big chance on me, but you won't regret it. And I have learned a lot this time around, and I know you won't be seeing me again after this is over. I'm too old for this. I have wanted to write and thank you both for some time now. This program you both run has allowed me to continue in my recovery, and with that, make amends and reclaim my life. For this, I am eternally thankful. Thank you. This card of thank you is long overdue. I want you both to know how much I appreciate you both, your help, understanding, hearts, encouragement. The way I feel about you is not something that can be written fully. I don't think you'd even understand how much you did for me. I love you always. I'm sober and doing okay. Thank you for the second chance to be with my son. Counsel, the City of Renton provides many important services for our citizens. The people on our EHD program are real citizens with real problems. If Renton goes with private carriers, I'm concerned the carriers will have questionable backgrounds, questionable equipment, and be solely for profit. For profit. I'm concerned affluent clients will be able to afford EHD where they can stay home. And I'm concerned marginalized citizens from marginalized communities will not be able to afford EHD and be forced to go to jail. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Okay, what's the wish to the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President.
Move to close the public hearing.
It's been moved by Council President Albertson, second by Councilmember Perez, that the public hearing be closed. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay? Motion carries. All right, we are on to the administrative report.
Good evening. Join us Friday, October 24, for the annual Truck or Treat Event from 5:00 to 7:30 PM at the Renton Community Center, 1715 Maple Valley Highway. Enjoy decorated trucks, festive stations filled with candy, costumes, and fun. A softer take on Halloween magic for younger kids and sensory-sensitive participants will take place from 5:00 to 5:45 PM. At 6:15, the Fang-tastic Spook-tacular Halloween walkthrough begins. This event sells out. Pre-registration for Trick or Treat participants is required and may be done by visiting our website at rentonwa.gov/events. Round up your family, friends, and four-legged companions and bring your Halloween spirit to downtown Renton on Saturday, October 25, for an old-fashioned Halloween party. Registration and a free photo booth open at 1:00 PM, followed by a costume contest at 3:00 PM on the stage at Kujini Florists and Fine Gifts at 413 Third Street. For more information, visit our events page on our website. Plan to attend the Senior Holiday Craft Bazaar Saturday, October 25, between 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM at the Don Person Senior Activity Center at 211 Burnett Avenue North. Shop for handcrafted arts, crafts, gifts, and more made by seniors 50-plus from Renton and surrounding areas. This is a perfect way to kick off your holiday shopping. Interest is free for shoppers of all ages. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures can be found on our website. All projects are weather permitting unless otherwise told. Roads will remain open. That is all, sir.
All right, thank you. Next up is audience comment. We have one person signed up. I want to remind everyone that all comments must be addressed to the council as a whole. You'll be given three minutes. When I call your name, please step up the podium. Tristan, come on up. You don't need my old reel.
Tristan Koshen, downtown Renton resident. Tonight, want to address the council on sentiment about bike lanes that I heard during committee the whole earlier. This is a sentiment that I'm kind of tired of hearing. Building bike lanes is not about how many people will use them. We don't apply this metric to building sidewalks, and looking at bike lanes through the lens of commuting percentages or number of users per day is not the metric for which anyone should base their views on bicycle infrastructure on. In the city, the plan is to eventually have sidewalks everywhere. I never hear the argument of "nobody uses them" applied to sidewalks in industrial areas or rural parts of the city. So why is the same metric applied to bike lanes? At the end of the day, my support and push for sidewalks and bike lanes is about accessibility. Every square inch of this city deserves to be fully accessible to those who don't drive. When someone decides to drive somewhere, they plan their route based on how they will get there the fastest. get there the fastest. When I plan my routes on my bicycle, I plan based on what road is least likely to get me killed or injured. Why should my choice not to drive in this city be a punishment? Why should my ability to get around safely be based on an arbitrary commute percentage number or a commonly mocked quote known as "build it and they will come," which shouldn't be used to dismiss accessibility for anyone who doesn't drive? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. We are on to the consent agenda. There's, the number's not there, so I don't know how many are on there, but if there, sorry. There are seven items for council consideration. Are there any, like, pull for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President.
Hearing none, move that council approve the consent agenda as published.
It's been moved by Council President Albertson, second by Councilmember Perez, that they consent, to approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. We're on to unfinished business. Council President Albertson.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Transportation Committee has four reports to present.
Transportation Aviation Committee, committee report. The first is regarding a change order with Do Little Construction. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute change order number two to contract 2483 with Do Little Construction in the amount of $280,400 for the 2024 Slurry Seal Project. This signed by the committee chairman members.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember McGurven.
I move, council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report.
It's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Right, the next report is regarding change order number 48 with Pavetta Brothers Construction. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute change order number 48 to contract 22163 with Pavetta Brothers Construction Incorporated in the amount of $111,794.25 for the Rayner Avenue South Corridor Improvements Phase Four project. This, too, is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
McGurven.
I would like to first highlight that this, add no additional working days to the contract, and then move that council concur with the Transportation Committee report.
It's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Right, the next report is regarding an agreement with KBA Incorporated. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute a professional services agreement with KBA Incorporated to provide full construction management services totaling $276,116 for the Oaksdale Avenue Southwest Pavement Preservation Project. This, too, is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move, council concur with the Transportation Committee report.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
The next and final report for Transportation Committee is regarding an agreement with Sound Transit. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the STRIDE Program Station Access Allowance Agreement with Sound Transit in an amount not to exceed $790,000, including the obligation of the grant funding to accomplish the Lake Washington Boulevard HOP Signal Project. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember McGurven.
I move, council concur with the Transportation Committee report.
It's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. All right, we're on to Councilmember Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van.
Thank you, Mayor. The Utilities Committee has three committee reports to present.
Right, the Utilities Committee, committee report. The first is regarding a latecomers agreement request for the High Avenue Northeast Sewer Extension. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to grant preliminary approval of the application for a 20-year latecomers agreement request from Joseph Luda petitioners. The application for a latecomers agreement was submitted to recover the $408,183 in estimated cost for a sewer main extension in the vicinity of 2124 High Avenue Northeast, so the adjacent properties will be required to share in the cost at such time that they benefit from the sewer main. The committee further recommends that the council authorize a preliminary assessment role to be forwarded to the city clerk, who will notify the affected property owners. If no protests are received, after construction of the facilities and approval of the final costs, the council can authorize preparation of the final assessment role and latecomer agreement. In the event there is a protest for valid cause, a public hearing will be held to resolve any issues prior to proceeding with the matter. This, too, is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mayor. I move that the council concur with the committee report.
It's been moved by Councilmember Van, second by Councilmember Rivera, that the council concur with the Utility Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
The next report is regarding the extension of a franchise with Extonet Systems. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to grant Extonet Systems LLC a five-year extension of their franchise agreement to install small cell wireless facilities within city right-of-way. The committee further recommends that the ordinance regarding this matter be presented for first reading at tonight's council meeting. This, too, is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Van.
I move that the council concur with the Utilities Committee report.
It's been moved by Councilmember Van, second by Councilmember Rivera, that the council concur with the Utility Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Right, the final report for the Utilities Committee is regarding a different latecomers agreement request, this one from the Bassano family, or Bassano multifamily water extension. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to grant preliminary approval of the application for a latecomers agreement request from Satara LLC, who are the petitioners. The application for a latecomers agreement was submitted to recover $317,925 in estimated cost for a water main extension in the vicinity of 117 Wells Avenue South, so that adjacent properties will be required to share in the cost at such time that they benefit from the water main. The committee further recommends that the council authorize a preliminary assessment role to be forwarded to the city clerk, who will notify the affected property owners. If no protests are received, after construction of the facilities and approval of the final costs, the council can authorize preparation of the final assessment role and latecomer agreement. In the event there is a protest for valid cause, a public hearing will be held to resolve any issues prior to proceeding with the matter. This, too, is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mayor, just like with this committee report, as well as the first one, there are administrative fees that the city does gain from it. So with that, I move that the council concur with this Utilities Committee report.
Okay.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Van, second by Councilmember Rivera, that the council concur in the Utility Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. All right, we are on to legislation. We have one ordinance for first reading.
This ordinance is regarding the franchise extension with Extonet Systems. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, granting to Extonet Systems LLC and its affiliates, successors, and assigns the right privilege, authority, and non-exclusive franchise extension for five years to construct, maintain, operate, replace, and repair a telecommunications network for small cell technology in, across, over, along, under, through, and below certain designated public rights away of the city of Renton, Washington, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Van.
I move that the ordinance be placed in second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Van, second by Councilmember Rivera, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. We're on to new business. Council President Albertson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Next Monday, October 27th, the committee of the whole will be meeting in the council conferencing center. One item on the agenda, and that is the State of the Court address. And then at 7 o'clock that evening, we'll have the regular council meeting here in council chambers and via video conference, and that's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Rivera.
No new business, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank all our public commentators for coming out tonight and sharing such incredible information. Thank you very much.
All right, next up is Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, October 27th, at 3:45 p.m., the Community Services Committee will be meeting in the council conference room and via video conference. We have two items on the agenda. The first is the farmer's market update. Second is emerging issues in parks and recreation, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McGurven.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, October 27th, the planning and development committee is canceled.
Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, October 27th, at 4:45 p.m., the Finance Committee will be held at the council conference room, also via video conference. There are seven items on the agenda. First, project acceptance with active construction incorporation for the Burnett Avenue South sidewalk and utilities replacement project. Second, Washington Department of Commerce Legacy Square Grant. Third, funding agreement for Washington State Department of Transportation 2025-2027 Commute Trip Reduction Program. Fourth, Amendment 225 to PAG 13007 with AT&amp;T Enterprises LLC. Fifth, 2025-2026 Mid-Biennium Budget Amendment Ordinance, Free Schedule Resolution and Property Tax Ordinance. Sixth, vouchers, and seventh, emerging issues in finance. That's it.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Van.
I don't have any new business, Mayor, but I want to thank our community members for coming on and speaking, and I know this topic, we have, this is our second hearing, and that the next, actually finalizing is next week. I do have a question in that, in terms of, and maybe one of my colleagues can enlighten me, in terms of the new criminal justice tax that we passed recently with this being a part of it, would, how do we see that implemented? But also, if there is an opportunity to look at the evidence of electronic home monitoring and the work that the city has been doing for the last 30 years?
Chief.
Comes on automatically. Yeah. Ryan Rutledge, Deputy Chief of Police, and Councilmember, I appreciate your question. I think when we talk about the, like, future funding, I think it's important to note that what we're looking at right now is the history of EHM or EHD in Renton. And I could just give a quick background on that, just to add some clarity to it, and then as we move on to the future, the future vision, what that could look like. So really, the background, the city's electronic monitoring program was established years ago to provide local jail alternative when the city operated its own detention facility, when we had our own jail here at the city. Since the transition to the regional jail system, the Score Jail, which opened in 2011, the need for the city-run EHM program has shifted and changed to our current day. So EHM is a jail alternative to being held in custody for some eligible offenders. So EHM is seen as a privilege authorized by the court and a monitoring service as provided. The city maintained a correctional monitoring role when the Renton jail was ended, so we continued that service, even though the kind of the correctional responsibility we had when we had our own jail moved to Score. The recent evaluation found that continuing to operate the program internally is not fiscally sustainable or responsible use of taxpayer funds. I do want to note that the decision reflects our responsibility to manage taxpayer resources effectively while maintaining essential services for our community. Ending the city-operated EHM program is necessary step toward fiscal sustainability and transparency. The service itself will remain available through private providers, as we discussed earlier, ensuring continuity for our courts and the defendants, so they will have the same service. We also want to express sincere gratitude to the two dedicated employees who have supported this program. Their service to the city and community is deeply appreciated. So as we look ahead to other ways to maybe fund EHM or EHD programs, you know, that's something that could be explored through the city. But the proposal today is the way the current model is set up, the current program is set up. That's what we included in this budget amendment. Does that help answer your question?
Yes, partly. I guess my question is, you did kind of allude to the future in terms of perhaps a different model, because we are, you know, we just voted to pass the criminal justice tax, right? It's, there's two things in America. You tax people to death, and there is also death itself, right? So I think it's important, as we're going through this, whether we're addressing, whether we are looking at totality and what the needs of the community is. If this is the model that doesn't work, what is the model that would eventually help us uplift our community members using the criminal justice tax that we are currently going to be implementing at the same time?
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
What's the wish of the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you so much. I'm going to answer the other half of Councilmember Van's question that wasn't quite answered. The Public Safety Sales Tax, of which we passed, is going to be going towards, I believe, five or six new positions, and Deputy Chief Rutledge can assist me on clarifying for that. Three, I believe, are going to be going towards a specialized sexual assault unit detectives, or three are going to be going towards our drone unit. You might need to hop up here to clarify those details, sir. But they're going towards our drone unit and a sexual assault unit, as well as a public defender increase because of the passage of the Supreme Court ruling that increased the number of public defenders. And to further clarify, the Mid-Biennium budget also will be providing a number of much-needed raises to our nonrepresented staff and hiring two new CED positions while dissolving our EHM program and firing those officers. And for the Public Safety Tax, sir, I'm so sorry.
You just want clarification.
On those, with three drones or three detectives?
We're asking for five additional positions with that. One would be a full-time position for a sergeant role, and the other four would be for officer detective positions.
Thank you. All right, what is the wish of the council?
We'll adjourn.
Second. Okay. Been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Council President Albertson, that we adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. We adjourn.